All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone. It's great to see so many people in our boardroom for our regular board meeting. This is a regular board meeting of the San Benito CISD Board of Trustees. Today is Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. The time is 5:30, and I call this meeting to order. We begin with roll call. Mr. Mario Silva.
Present.
Mr. Oscar Medrano.
Present.
Rudy Corona.
Present.
Dr. Ariel Cruz.
Present.
Frutoso Gomez.
Present.
Orlando Lopez.
Present.
Teresa Servellón.
Present.
Steven Weller.
Present.
And I'm here, we do have a quorum established. With that said, we move on to item 1.2 and 1.3. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States and Texas Flags and our invocation. Mr. Medrano.
Leading us in the pledge of allegiance from La Encantada Elementary is Carolyn Isabel Galván. Carolyn Isabel Galván is the daughter of Jessica Diaz. Carolyn is nine years old and a fourth grade student at La Encantada Elementary where she's constantly on the A-B honor roll. Her favorite subject is science, and she loves learning new things about Earth. She is a proud student council representative and enjoys helping her school and fellow peers. Carolyn plays defense on the team raid soccer team with the Harlingen Arroyo de Soccer Club, where she and her teammates earned the number one place in their bracket and advanced to regionals. Carolyn is also an active member of the ACE program, where she enjoys playing soccer, is on the chess team, and plays keyboard in the ACE rock band. In her free time, she likes drawing and trying new foods at nice restaurants. Her plans are to one day become an artist. For her 15th birthday, Carolyn's dream is to go to Paris. Her mother is very proud of all her accomplishments. Leading the invocation also from La Encantada Elementary School is Madison Alexandra Leal. Madison Leal is 10 years old and a fifth grader at La Encantada Elementary. She is the youngest daughter of Sandra Leal. Her favorite subject is science and math. Madison's goal is to become a doctor and help others. She hopes to find an alternative method and make shots to less painful to kids. Madison participates in the after-school program golf team, sings in the school choir, dances in a folk group, and is a member of the student council and still maintains excellent grades. This year, Madison was honored to represent La Encantada Elementary in the Superintendent's Greyhound Student Chat. Her hobbies include reading, swimming, telling silly jokes, and playing with new puppy Oreo. Madison's smile and laughs brings so much love and joy to her family that is so blessed to have her. Madison has two brothers, Jordan and Jaden, and one sister, Sarah. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honors Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Lord God, we thank you for gathering us here today to pray over the decisions that will be made tonight. I ask that you continue to bless the people who are here too, better not only our schools but the community that we love. May you give them the strength, courage, and wisdom to lead us today and for the rest of the school year. We ask this in Saint's precious name, amen.
Let's give him a round of applause. And we have a certificate for you guys if you want to come out so we can take a picture with the board. Will the parents of these fine students please stand up and be recognized at this time? And Principal Gracie Martinez, thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Medrano. We move on to special recognition, item 2.1. San Benito CISD Board of Trustees, School Board Recognition Month. Ms. Servellón.
Yes, so I'll start off this evening with a proclamation from the Office of the Governor that has to do with everything that our Board of Trustees do day in and day out. To catch a glimpse of the Texas of tomorrow, we need only to look into the classrooms of today. The boys and girls presently enrolled in our schools will, in due time, take the reins of the nation and determine the destiny of our people. Our founders knew that the American democratic experiment could succeed only if our population remained virtuous and educated, and our schools promote the very enlightenment upon which our republic depends. Consequently, the task that befalls our school boards is one of utmost importance. Recognizing that our educational system is foundational to our social order, individual schools and districts are answerable to the people through elected school boards. The boards set a vision for their district based on our students' needs and community values. They uphold standards of rigor, achievement, discipline, and decency, and they provide a forum in which concerned parents and citizens can involve themselves in the educational process and make their voices heard on pressing items. Ultimately, meaningful progress must be initiated at the grassroots level, and to this end, school boards ensure the concerns of parents and citizens alike are addressed. A child's God-given capacity is particularly unlimited, and to unlock the fullness of this potential, we must all support the efforts of local school boards in any way that we can. We must likewise remain informed about issues facing our school districts, never forgetting that these bodies are accountable to the citizenship. Citizens. At this time, I encourage all Texans to acknowledge and celebrate the thousands of school board trustees who voluntarily serve the next generation of leaders. From the Panhandle to the Gulf of Mexico, our school board members advocate on behalf of our children, strive to provide them the best possible education, and ensure that their needs and that most of their parents remain a central focus. In doing so, they pave the way for a better, brighter future for the Lone Star State. Therefore, I, Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, do hereby proclaim January 2023 to be School Board Recognition Month. With that being said, I have Ms. Gonzalez that is here to continue celebrating school board.
Good evening, everyone. Trustees, tonight we honor you. Normally, you honor our students, but right now, it's all about you. We have some students, thank you to the parents that have brought them out here, that are going to present you with some tokens of our appreciation. Mr. Moreno, if you would step down. Tonight, we have Miguel Ángel Puente representing Dr. CM Cash Elementary. We have Sineia Cassada from Frank Roberts Elementary. We have Devante Alaniz representing San Benito Veterans Memorial Academy. And Natalia López representing Sullivan Environmental Science Academy. If y'all can move a little bit that way, and Sergio's gonna take a group picture. Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Mr. Silva, you are our next honoree. Yes. Honoring our Vice President is Leana Cortez representing Ed Downs Fine Arts Academy. Ray Lynn Trinity López representing La Encantada Elementary. And Hannah Marie Benavides representing San Benito High School. I'm gonna take a quick photo. Secretary Oscar Medrano. Today, we have Melody Celeste Cardosa representing Berta Cavassa Middle School. Jasmine Hernández representing Fred Booth Elementary. And Adriana Romero representing our Go Academy. Trustee Rudy Corona. We have Camila Alejandra Martínez representing Judge Oscar de la Fuente Elementary. And Lori Martínez representing Miller Jordan Middle School. Thank you. Trustee, Dr. Ariel Cruz. We have Jacqueline Loera representing Gateway to Graduation Academy. And Giovanni Cruz representing Riverside Middle School. Trustee Frutoso M. Gomez, Jr. We have Rory de la Cruz representing La Paloma Elementary. And Elena García representing Rangerville Elementary. Thank you. Trustee Orlando Lopez. We have Nathan Sandoval representing Angela G. Leal Elementary. And Emily Garza representing Dr. Raúl Garza, Jr., STEAM Academy. I'd like to ask all of the parents of all the students that helped us recognize our trustees to stand and be recognized. Trustees, that was just a small token of appreciation. We can't thank you enough.
Item 2.2. San Benito High School All-State Band Honoree, named All-State Musician. Ms. Servellón.
Yes, sir. I also have Ms. Gonzalez here tonight that will help us honor our students.
We are calling in George Segura. He made it to the All-State Band. His director is Arturo Rivas. And Director of Band, Daity Mendosa. Mr. Mendosa is gonna say a few words about the honor.
Pleasure to introduce you, Mr. Segura, who is the newest member of our band program to be a Texas All-State Band Member. He plays the trombone, the bass trombone, and he earned this distinction by the process of audition. He tried out for all district, all region. He got first chair at area, and eventually tried out at the state level to be considered the fourth highest ranking bass trombone player in the great state of Texas. So we wanna introduce him to you, and also wanna introduce Mr. Arturo Rivas. Also wanna let you know that being considered a Texas All-State Band Member is the highest honor available for students and high school musicians. So we want to introduce his mom as well, who's here in support of him. So a round of applause for Mr. Segura and his mom. Thank you so much.
And if we can get the trustees to come take a group photo.
He stole it merchandise, but he would like to do it first. Once the grace on the whistle.
The next group of Samuel High School students that will be honoring are our All-State Vocalists. We have Romaldo Abrego, 12th grade. Lea Juárez, 11th grade. Romel San Pedro, 10th grade. And David Isagire, 11th grade. Ms. Anna García, Assistant District Pianist. Adonai Avalos, Assistant Choral Director. And Eradio Martínez, Director of Choral Activities. Mr. Martínez is gonna say a few words.
Good evening, members of the board and all who are in attendance tonight. My name is Eradio Martínez, the Director of Choirs for San Benito CISD. Every school year, choir programs throughout the state of Texas compete in the TMEA All-State Vocal Auditions. This competition consists of several rounds, including district, region, pre-area, and area. This process actually began in July, and these students have been working on several different songs throughout the past six months or so, six or seven months. They've worked really, really hard, singing very, very difficult music. Some of it was in Portuguese, some of it was in French, a lot of it was in French. Sometimes they have them sing in German and even in Russian in some years. So these students have been able to progress through all of those rounds, and tonight we have four All-Staters. And I will say one thing, that when a school has one All-Stater, All-State Vocalist specifically, we usually consider them very blessed. When they have a couple, we say they're really good, but when we have four, I call that the gold standard. I wanna thank all the parents that are here tonight that allowed us to work many hours with your children. We worked late hours and weekends, and we appreciate that very much. I also wanna thank the members of the school board and community for your continued support of our choir program, and we look forward to the continued success of these students. Thank you all.
Will the parents of these students please stand and be recognized? We're now going to recognize our NJROTC Drill Team. They have qualified for the Area 10 NJROTC State Drill Meet. The students are Devante Alaniz. Jesua Bautista. Amanda Fuentes. Anthony Gomez. Priscilla Gonzalez. Annalise Guillen. Haida Kel Hernández. William Huffman. Juan Juárez. Luz Elena Juárez. Alan Leralde. Emily Lerma. Kaitlin Luna. Ruben Martínez. Joel Mena. Diego Paz. America Pedraza. Alexa Rojas. Jared Rosales. Angel Santoio. Damian Silva. Argil Soto. Dana Lee Soto. Audrey Uoya. Yasmin Vázquez. And Israel Viarial. We have Chief Wilson, NJROTC Senior Naval Science Instructor, and Mr. Jimmy Gonzalez, NJROTC Assistant. Chief Wilson is gonna say a few words on this honor.
I would like to note, Board Members, Superintendent, community members, thank you for supporting our program. Most importantly, what a lot of people don't realize, how hard this is. You see in front of you what I consider the best of San Benito. These 25 young men and women, and only four of them have had previous drilling experience, stepped up and kept our legacy going alive to go to state again. There's seven different competitive teams. On the armed and unarmed drill team, these young men and women have to learn over 40 feet, 40, I'm sorry, 54 different movements, and they have to be perfect each and every time. On our exhibition shows, they have to provide honor, courage, commitment, pride in community, pride in service, pride in nation. Some of these students also do our physical fitness team, our academic team, and our competitive color guard. This by no way is a small feat, what we accomplished this year, because we only had four returning members. And in August, I looked at them and I said, "Are you ready to go to state?" And they said, "Yes, chief," and they accomplished their goal. And we're not done. We're still marching for state. We have a competition this weekend, and then we go to state in February, and hopefully we'll bring back some more pride for their community. These young men and women work very hard, and they are the pride of San Benito. Thank you.
While we get everyone situated, will the parents of these students please stand and be recognized?
At this time, we move to item 3.1, Board Recognition. There'll be a short break. We'll return within a few minutes. All right, folks, once again, thank you for being here. The time is 6:14. We're going to go ahead and continue with the second portion of our meeting. The next item on the agenda is item 4.1, Public Comment. Before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the Board's procedures for handling public comment. The public comment portion of our meeting is available to members of the public who wish to address any topic. Anyone who would like to speak during public comment must sign in prior to the start of the meeting and list the topic or topics they want to discuss. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the Board for each topic. If more than 10 speakers are signed up to speak on the same topic, all additional speakers on that item shall be limited to two minutes. However, any public testimony speaker who requires a translator will receive up to six minutes to address the Board. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Lastly, we ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own children. If a speaker is seeking Board resolution of a specific complaint, that concern should be addressed through the district's grievance process. District Policy DGBA has been established for addressing employee complaints. Policy FNG is the avenue for filing parent complaints. And Policy GF addresses community member complaints. Grievance forms may be obtained at any campus administration office or at the district's central administration offices. Thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Carlos Cortez. Mr. Cortez, welcome.
Robert Cortez, and he's done a lot in his, from his childhood to his high school, college, professional careers. And I would like to acknowledge him for any kind of future building, sports complex, practice facilities, whatever that can be. Maybe he can dedicate his name to it. And I'm going to just talk a little bit about him. Robert Cortez's football career started way early in Fred Booth Elementary. He was a running back and played defense. When Robert played high school football, he was known as one of the hardest charging players in the Rio Grande Valley. He was a two-way starter for the San Benito Greyhounds in the early 60s. He has not, he was not big-bodied at 5'10" and 190 pounds, but was known for his crushing running style and being a dominant defensive linebacker. Robert was a big part in helping the Greyhounds to the Texas State Semifinals as a sophomore in 1961. He also played basketball and ran track for the Greyhounds. Robert got his sports scholarship to play football at Texas A&amp;M. He began his Aggie football career on the freshman fifth string, but his hustle, toughness, and determination soon earned him a starting role. He was a three-year starter on the varsity defense. He was a football letterman from 1965 to 1967 and also voted as team captain his senior year in 1967. He was known as an extremely physical linebacker. He was instrumental in Texas A&amp;M winning the 1967 Southwest Conference Championship and the 1968 Cotton Bowl with a victory over the eighth-ranked Alabama Crimson Tide. He graduated from A&amp;M in 1968 and had a long coaching career. He also served as Athletic Director here in San Benito High School. Robert also played one year in semi-pro football league with the Midland Roughnecks. He played outside linebacker for them. In 19, he was also inducted in several Halls of Fame's. In 1987, Robert was inducted into the Latin American International Hall of Fame for Football. In May of 1997, he was inducted to the 10th Annual Rio Grande Valley Sports Hall of Fame. In June of 2005, he was inducted into the Hispanic Sports Hall of Fame in San Antonio, Texas. Many of our siblings and Aggie teammates attended the induction ceremony. All his football teammates spoke how tough he was, but also how kind he was. His last induction was in January of 2006 to the City of Palms Hall of Fame in McAllen, Texas. If any new build, any sports buildings being built, please consider Robert Cortez's name or any existing buildings needing a name. Robert Cortez is 78-years-old and thank you God that he is still with us. Would be great for him to get recognized and honored while still here with us.
Mr. Cortez, excuse me, your time is up. I appreciate you though, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Okay, our next speaker tonight is Mr. Jesus Aguillera. Mr. Aguillera, welcome.
These are some of the topics that I want to talk about. You have a list. The first one is going to be the high school principal. Okay? Any decision you would have made would have been the wrong one. You can't win. So, I don't know what happened, but I know he retired. But just know, Mr. Sevion, whatever you do, some people would have liked it, some people wouldn't. Okay? The people that said, "Fire him?" No. Anyway, so, special ed. Special ed. No need to traumatize students by sending them to the PRC. Why do we even consider sending our special ed students to PRC? Why? They're not going to get anything from it. Send them to ISS, but we don't need to be sending our special ed kids to PRC or even considering it. The next one is about the ex-high school girls' track coach. He got fired. Fired. And he's one of us. He played football with you. You know? Here's the problem. He's done 14 years, 14 years of the summer track program on his own. He did the girls. It took him to regionals all the time he was here. Here's the problem. I can't say the word, but I'm not going to say the word, but let me say he's tough. Okay? You know the word you use for me? Well, that's what he is. But he's tough and he can get it done. And the person that did this, now I'm going to the next one, the Athletic Director. He needs to step down, get rid of him as Athletic Director. You want to keep him as a coach? That's fine, but we need an Athletic Director that is willing to work with all the students. All the, all the different sports, the coaches. They need somebody to direct them because, hey, we all know what he does. He only does the football. And he's the only one that got a two-year contract of all these people. He was the only one. Why? He doesn't walk on water, you know? And he doesn't make decisions, good decisions. And here's the worst. People tell me, "Chuy, that's just, that's just MO. He'll crush you." Get rid of him or demote him or whatever you want to do. Here's the next one. The tractor for the band to pull their band trailer. They need a tractor. They were here today. You know, they go to all these events and they can't take their trailer because they don't have transportation. It's about $18,000 for a tractor. And it's down to 81. And we honored him. Come on, let's get them together so they can get that trailer going. The indoor multipurpose sports facility needs to be utilized by all students as it was intended. Do you know that they don't use it? They don't have a schedule? Again, go back to the Athletic Director, doesn't do his job. Yet you got rid of our principal for whatever reason. You know, this, there's no schedule, guys. And you tell, there's coaches that never seen the indoor facility. Coaches! Have you seen it? Have any of you seen it? Or you saw it because of all the pictures you brought that it's already falling apart? The cybersecurity attack. Okay, let me tell you. You guys haven't told us anything about it. And there's no reason, except I think there's a letter already went out because everybody called me, "Hey, whatever." I said, "Come down, they're already handling it." That Mr. Sevion is taking care of it, the Board is taking care of it, and the DA is taking care of it. Here's what I, what they told me. We, in May the 3rd, May the 3rd, they wanted $300,000 as a ransom not to put the information out there in public. May 3rd. Okay, May 3rd. I have an appointment tomorrow morning at 11:00. I'm going to go find out more about it. But come on, you know, just tell us. I know you can't sometimes, but tell us something. And you did because everybody got alarmed. No. Just, uh, look into it, you know? I'm going to come back and fight every single one of them, but I only have three minutes. So, it's kind of hard. But you guys know, you guys know about that coach. Look, we were winning by 40 points and he still had the first string in there. And that's okay. But how do we leave and know this respect to you really? But how do we leave our starting quarterback for four quarters? If he would have gotten hurt, we would have been hurting. You know? So, all of you that know to play the game, you know what I'm talking about. So, again, I have it in for that Athletic Director, so let's do something about it. Oh, and one more thing, I have to say this because I heard it today. Ms. Cantu was not here when Carmen was here. So, just so you, all of you be clear, she wasn't here. She's already left. And just like we run off all these people, she left too. One of the best. Thank you.
Mr. Aguillera, thank you. Our next person up for public comment is Ms. Mary Maney. Ms. Maney, welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent Sevion, Mr. Moreno, Board Members. I had a couple of things I wanted to do, but the first thing was congratulations on for all the stuff that you have done for our benefit here at the district. You know, we have had very proactive for a lot of stuff that's going on and you are trying to help with part of what's going on currently. So, but thank you for all that you do because we do ask a lot for you and I'm going to continue and ask some more. Okay. One thing, the cyber, about the cybersecurity thing. I really, really wish you would follow Dr. Cruz's suggestion and have a town hall meeting. I have surveyed my classes and I teach at the high school and 85% to 90% of my classes have received a letter from the students and I was asking about their parents. And most of them were of the opinion, they didn't think it mattered much. So, you know, we're having this adulting discussion about, yes, you do need to enroll in and just to make sure, yes, you are not old enough to really own a credit card, but that doesn't mean somebody isn't using your credit. So, if we could get on that town hall and also encourage as part of it as getting those kids or getting the parents to enroll their kids in it so that there is checking on it. I mean, I've been at another school where I dealt with graduate students, graduating students, and I had all my kids pull their security reports from all three. And two of my kids already had tanked out credit and they didn't own a credit card. That was due to their parents, unfortunately, on that one. But I mean, it's one of those, it's something we need to be aware of. So, please seriously consider the town hall meeting so that we can actually get a little bit more information out there and with Spanish speakers there who can, you know, can get it in both languages. The other thing that I would like you guys to consider, and this is an issue from a teacher's standpoint that has become an issue for a lot of teachers. Due to the COVID policy that kept changing, you know, as far as we had to be out, we could be in, we could be out, all that. The teachers were required to take five days' leave whether or not they were symptomatic or not. And we're getting into some problems right now with people having no leave whatsoever and RSV and the new COVID variety is coming out. And we're experiencing some difficulties with staffing. You know, as a teacher, I really hate being called in to go cover somebody else's class. You know, not that, not that I don't understand, it happens and I make arrangements with some people to be able to do it, but you know, we're short subs and we just need to consider that from the point of view of, you know, making our lives just a little bit easier. So, if there was some way to go back and consider and think about it and do something for it, that would be greatly appreciated from the staff. And again, congratulations on Board Month and hopefully everybody's going to have a good day out of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maney. Our next speaker is Beatriz Palomino Villarreal. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. First of all, I'd like to start off by speaking for Mr. Gavon. I want to acknowledge him. I know that he's no longer with the district. And I, along with my kids and other community members, are saddened by the decision that he retired or whatever it was that was finalized. But I want to thank him for everything that he did for our students, the community, the changes that he did recently to the high school. He finally got a lot of our children covered up. He made a lot of changes, he stood his ground, but he also found common ground for the parents and teachers to get along, to agree, even at one point, we chose to disagree. So, he was an outstanding person, a pillar to the community. And you know what? I just want him to know that we do miss him and that he made a big difference, you know, and that we have a lot of love and respect for him, no matter what people might say about him. I know that there are a lot of people that didn't like him, but the children did. He showed a lot of love to our children and I think that is what matters the most, what our children are getting from the administrators, the love. And he is one of them that did show that. So, I want to give him thanks for that and I hope he's watching. And I hope he knows that he will be missed in our district. That's one, topic number one. Moving along to the cybersecurity attack. I keep hearing about it over and over. And I know, I read different articles that have derived since December 19th of last year. There's so many numbers in there, starting with the population that it affected anywhere from 16,000 to 18,000, 30,000, 25,000 to 30,000. 21,000 people, victims were victimized by this. But the population in San Benito, in the sense that it showed from last year to present year, But the population in San Benito, in the census it showed from last year to present year, is anywhere from twenty-four thousand to twenty-five thousand. District Attorney Sines gave a statement in his article saying that thirty thousand people were affected by this. That's like a hundred percent plus an extra five thousand. The numbers don't add up. And so we won't be sugarcoating over the community, like a board member stated on there. The truth is, rather than dissing the district about this, something that it was, we, you couldn't prevent it from happening, nobody knew it was happening. How about we educate our members? And tell them the truth. You know what? You already gave us, you sent a notice out, I was, my two children were affected by it. There's a number on there, we wanna go ahead, sign up, that way we are being harassed or if we see something that's gonna happen to our children or credit, call it in. But you can also call the credit bureau. As as adults, if I wanna take care of my credit, which I have good credit, I'm gonna do what I, I'm gonna take whatever measures I have to take, which is calling the credit bureau, saying there was something that happened. Go ahead, red flag me. And those people that wanna say they've been affected, because I did read another board member's comment that says he was affected, him, his family, and his son. Well then, go ahead, print out your credit history from before the attack and present it to the board and see how badly you were affected by it. How did it do any financial burden to you? Because it seems more like it that the more that we give out that bad negative news to the media, we're almost like pushing for, come in, once again, let's go attack our members, attack our district, so our pockets kick in bigger. All we have to do is call the credit bureau and let them know, hey, this happened, and you didn't get flagged. And that way, if something, if there's a discrepancy happening within your status, they'll let you know. It's also thinking outside the box, it's critical thinking. If it's affecting you personally, do something about it. Don't just stand there in place. Move forward and do something. And for the underage children, it doesn't affect your credit. I actually spoke to my banker, and the only way it affects their credit is if they're signed up with me. So it does not affect our children at, under the age of eighteen.
Ms. Palomino, your time is up for that topic.
Okay. I'm moving on to vaping. Vaping is a very, it's a growing epidemic problem that we have here in our county, in our school. I feel that we've been able to control it in our school with the changes that you guys made as board. All the policies that y'all pushed in. I think that they've been doing very well with cracking down on the crime. But I know that when you get caught with a vape student, that when they get caught with it, they are charged with, depending how much they have on them. They're considered third-degree felonies or a felony of any type, period. I know six juveniles, six of their family members, that I have spoken to their parents, that they were all caught and all charged to the same degree, which is a third-degree felony. The process that we all have to go through, except for one. One juvenile out of the six had his case dismissed. That juvenile, I question it, is it because he is the nephew of Judge Garza? Because he has an uncle who is a judge and knows connections and asked for a favor and did this? Because last that I saw him, when my nephew had gotten busted with this, and we had a lengthy process to go through. He lost his scholarship. He got kicked out of the wrestling team. He was kicked out of sports. But not this child, not this juvenile. He actually, it's like, we went ahead and said, oh, you're gonna get a vacation. You're gonna go ahead, get some time off, and then you're gonna come back, you're gonna do ISS, and that's it. While my nephew and all these other children, all these parents, their children go to JJ AEP every day, got the ultimate. Pay, we paid out of our pocket. And once again, my nephew lost his scholarship. And this child, this juvenile gets to attend everything else just because he is the nephew of Judge Garza? How does that happen? Last that I saw, PD, according to them, they followed the steps that were supposed to be done. But I did notice that there was some stuff that was left out in the report. This juvenile also had a weapon and extra drugs with him. Those were not mentioned, and he still gets to sit in class every day. Two board members reached out to the parents of this juvenile and said, anything we can help you with, anything you need. And still, it's like laughing at the community, laughing at everybody else, because I know I took it personal.
Ma'am, your time is up on this topic.
It's the discipline that follows with the vaping. If all these juveniles are getting the equal amount of discipline, getting pushed back, why does this juvenile get exempt? Why is it, you don't think that that, the, the parents questioned that? I know that out of these five other victims, these, these kids that committed the same crime, have reached out to administrators, have tried reaching out to you guys. And they never get a call back. I'm not blaming the superintendent because I've actually had, every time I call, you return my calls. But somewhere along the way, the calls don't get passed to you. And I know because I've had that issue recently. How fair is it? What are we supposed to tell our children? That one juvenile gets exempt and, and, and it's okay, you can go back? Because of who he's related to? And because the parents know the board members, some of them? The referral never even made it to your hands. How does that happen? I know my nephews made it to the hands of the superintendent and in a heartbeat, in a blink of an eye, he like didn't even think about it twice. And my nephew was arrested. Carizales. All these other kids were arrested except for this one. The discipline doesn't only fall on the children, it needs to also fall on those that decided to do this process of hiding it, not bringing it forward to you guys. I don't know if you're aware of this juvenile that I am talking about, but I know everybody knows about it, the whole town. Everybody just wants to keep hush-hush because of the retaliation. They're scared. I don't know what, but I'm not scared. I'm not scared to stand up for my community members, and I'm not scared to stand up for all these other parents and all these other juveniles that want that same treatment that this kid got, that this juvenile got, to be sitting in class. Everybody deserves a second chance. But if, if the dancers, a dancer was once caught, she had, she got kicked off of the dance team for two years, two years. No sports, no idea. What makes this child any different? If we're gonna open the doors, then we're gonna open them completely for everyone. Not just for one, because we're friends with certain board members. It's gonna be open for everyone. Either we open them or we shut them, and we keep it even. Because if not, how are our children gonna learn? And if there was a mistake, an error made, then that means that in every district, there's been an error made. And that means that the DA is gonna go ahead and have to open up those doors for every other district. Because they say that the way the-
Your time is up on that topic, ma'am.
Accountability, which falls right with the discipline. If the DA went ahead and dismissed this case, brought it down to a Class C, because there's just so many rumors, but we all know that it was dismissed. Because a juvenile's parent, the father, doesn't know how to keep his mouth shut and how to keep it within his own circle, just the rumor spreads like wildfire here in San Benito. They must be held accountable. Starting with the one who asked for the favor. The one who decided to turn their eye for the pills and the weapons that were found in the car. Whoever decided to skip out on giving the referral to the superintendent. Whoever allowed this little boy to play, to continue, because right now, the juvenile is practicing, going on about his life, while everyone else has to leave JJ AEP and go straight home. Can't be on any campuses. I, I don't understand it. So all the people, all these people that played a role, from parents to administrators to everyone, they all must be held accountable. Even the DA, because I would really like to know, what is it that they found that was so different from every other case? Every other crime, because you have five other children that committed the same crime, only this little boy amplified it by having a weapon and pills in the car. And he walks around as cocky as a judge does here in San Benito. Like, mm, I can do whatever I want because it's me. Not on my time. As long as I'm a citizen and as a community member from here, which is what some of you board members should be doing, caring about the community, not sugarcoating whatever we feel like it. And picking and choosing what we sugarcoat around here is stepping forward. The way I did it for my daughter. And some got held accountable, some didn't. And we lie to the community about the accountability. Because if it was true that we hold the accountability and you all should be held, then you all wouldn't be sitting here at the board, those that said the sugarcoating. I wanna make sure that every parent from, out of these other people that I'm standing up for, that I'm going to try my hardest to make sure that this juvenile and the parents, and along with everybody else that was involved, will be held accountable for it. Because it's not fair. To those board members that were involved too, I really hope that they are held accountable as well. Because in the past, they were also involved in what they did to my daughter. For the false imprisonment, the past superintendent placing her in the library, locking her in there, still sit here. Yet my remedy was granted with the superintendent resigning, according to the attorneys.
Your time is up on that topic, ma'am. Moving on to truancy.
This, the truancy falls also within the same umbrella of the vaping. I recently received a letter that my son, I was getting hit with truancy charges due to my son missing so many days of school within a period. I was like, okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. You know, my son, or I have his, what are they? His, uh, he missed school, so it's those doctor's excuses. I have his doctor's excuses, only of course, I never, I failed to turn them in on time. I spoke to the principal, she was very nice, she went ahead, she's like, bring them in, let me see, but you know, you still have to be certain about ninety percent of the time in class, present, in order for the grades to stand in the credits. This little boy, the juvenile that I'm talking about, missed twenty-eight, twenty-nine days of school. And there's no truancy, he was not hit with truancy, got full credit because obviously, it's, it's, it's obvious to the eye that he got credit because he is in practice and playing sports. It's no pass, no play, from what I've always understood. But the athletic director wants to relive, relive his glory days and allows these kids to go ahead and finds a way to fudge all those things for them blank spaces and allows them to play. If he was not here, if he missed twenty-eight, twenty-nine days, how did he get credits? How did he get grades? He was expelled. How did they fill in the blanks to those, to that grade book? How did those attendance books get filled in? How did he get credit? It doesn't make sense. But I believe the athletic director, who is not a mentor to our children, has a lot to do with it. I agree, he should be demoted. If not, I prefer him to be fired over coached by the, uh, I just recently heard, right, right, right now, that he was no longer with our district. He's a mentor. He cares about our kids. He cares about their GPA. He actually cares about our children's GPA. This athletic director doesn't care where they stand. They can have a two-point-oh, and he doesn't care. He made sure she always had a ninety in every class if she was going to run. Our football player's gonna have a seventy, and it doesn't matter, as long as you have, you pass it, and you get in there and you're gonna play. How do you do that? What are you teaching our children? Where is that? It, it, it makes me wonder, it does, it, does he fall into the truancy part act too? Like, did he have something to do with it? Because for everything else, he's allowing these kids to do all these things. These football players, these Al Bundy's that we're creating, like I said, my son, I speak for my son, that's why I pulled him out. Corruption. It falls under the same thing. I pulled my son out of playing football. Because I was not going to create an Al Bundy. I know he's not gonna play pro. What's more important to me? Him going to college or having a small, little legacy career here at football, San Benito High School? So he can be installing cable once he's eighteen, nineteen. But with the corruption that we have here, we, we somehow just allow our children to go ahead and do this, and we're gonna cover it up for you. And we're gonna go ahead and allow you all to do these things. That corruption also involves making all of this, the cybersecurity attack, larger than life, bigger than what it needs to be. Our corruption is so bad in our district that they make you, board president, superintendent, and the majority of the board so bad, and the minority looks so great. And the minority's always the one speaking out, speaking out. As I continue, there's a pattern with Fernando Del Valle's newspaper articles. And it's always seeming to attack you guys. So I see that there's like, there's, there's a mole within you all's board group. Our corruption is so bad that they continue to attack and say that it happened on your watch, on your watch, under your watch? The fact is that it, this cyber attack happened on your watch. Well, Minerva Lopez in twenty fifteen wasn't under your watch. And she stole social security numbers with parents' names, informations, her coworkers. I didn't see the DA put that out there, I didn't see it in the paper. Why? Because, oh, it's who we know. I wanna see Fernando Del Valle put that story out there. I did see that on, on one of the social media platforms, Janie Silva put on there, oh, I'm still waiting for my letter. Why don't you just ask your friend? I'm sure she has your social security number and your information. Why wasn't that brought up in twenty fifteen? Why don't we tell the community members that the DA, it didn't even make it to the DA's board either? Again, the DA, the judge, our local judges dropped it? There's more in our corruption, it's just, it's not within our district. It falls within the whole city. And our community members need to know about it. They need to worry more about the personnel that's working inside our system than these hackers that it's, it's small time, I mean, of all places, why San Benito District? We're worried about our social security numbers? We should be worried about the files that they stole. Whose files were they? What were on those files? Was it the money? The checks that were made last year? I believe on consistency was next.
Consistency.
There needs to be a consistency with the stories that are being said, that are being placed in that paper. And I bring that directly to you guys as board members because it is one of you board members. Sometimes you like to flip this, this switch, AKA John Escobar. You know who you are. You sit at the board. Be consistent with your stories. Don't just sugarcoat what you want. Say it all. From twenty fifteen to present day. That same consistency needs to run with our children. You cannot have favoritism just because we are, or that person, that juvenile is related to the judge, or knows someone. There was another student, another juvenile, that was also caught with a complete unit of vape. And by complete unit, it's a cartridge with the pen. And because his brother's a cop, a favor, of course, was done again. Same judge within our community, it was dropped. The child never did JJ AEP either. Attended the first day of school this year, and he was caught on- Attended the first day of school this year, and he was caught on the last week of school last year. How fair is that? Who is doing the error by not bringing you the referrals? Along there, along that way, through that trial, there's some corruption happening. And if you can't be consistent with everyone, how do you expect us to trust you? How are we supposed to trust the board? You guys are supposed to be a complete unit, standing up for everyone. I ask you all to please look into these things. I, what am I supposed to tell my kids? I'm not giving up hope, not, not with our district. Because of those bad apples that continue to run their mouths to our paper, rather than looking and saying, like, this is our place, you're supposed to be standing up for our community, our people. You diss on us, you do us dirty on that paper. And it's like, it makes you happy. I don't know how you sleep at night. You don't care about our people. You care about your pocket. You smirk because it's true. I was told at church that when you feel offended, it's because they're telling you the truth. But you don't care, because if you did, you tell our people, it costs nothing, do you know, it costs me nothing to come up here to the board and tell the people that all they have to do is call the credit bureau and get your stuff fixed. All these numbers, all of these numbers, community, how can we have more thirty thousand people victimized when we don't even have that many in our population here? Our population is San Benito. I encourage you superintendent and board members to please open an investigation on all of these topics that I have brought up. The vaping, the juvenile. I will send you an email with names. I have a recording that states that all my allegations that I am making are true. Mine are not assumptions, because we all know what happens when we go off assumptions. We all know what happens. Where everything that I am stating is a fact, I have text messages from offers saying, if you go with, uh, if you pay this attorney, your child will get off at no cost, for free or dismissed. Before I take it any further, I ask you to please look into it. Starting with our PD, because we have corrupt PD members, corrupt teachers. If you're able to fill in a blank space on grades, put in a grade for a juvenile that's not yours, what else are you willing to do? That's fraud. And they need to be charged with it. Everybody that's involved needs to be held accountable. So before I take it any further, I ask you to please look into this matter, all of these topics. Because they're very important to me and to the community members, and to these other fi-, for these other five families that I am fighting for, that I'm speaking in their behalf. I, I leave our trust in your hands. Furthermore, my last topic is under hope. Regardless of everything and all these things that I just brought up, I still continue to have hope for our district, for it to get further in so many things, to aspire more than anything with trust, for the community members to trust you guys. I see the changes that you guys are making. They're positive. I, even though I read all of Fernando Del Valle's, uh, articles, and I'm having a bad day, they make me laugh. Because he's an imbecile, who I don't know where he gets his information from, and more than anything, because he doesn't go back and read his prior articles that he writes and how the numbers don't match. But I leave, I, I stay here and I stand with hope. My candle will not shut off. Because people like you, Mr. De Vion, that return phone calls. I was, I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. E., I wanna say his name's Mr. Eduresti. Never had I met him before, and I believe he's been with our district for seven years, if I'm not mistaken. He has taken the time to do what board members could never do for me last year, calling me in regards to my children. He makes it consistent. He will compare and say, what's the difference from this to this? How are things gonna get done? He leaves me with a chance of, of hope that our district can come out of this. And that there's not bad people in our district, not every single person's bad. And I wanna thank him, Mr. Galvan, Servion, board members that have care. And to Coach Padilla. It breaks my heart to know that he's no longer with our district. I hope that that's another consideration you guys can do, bring him back. He cared. People, people like him care about our students. How fair is it that those that care lose their jobs and those that don't care sit here and smirk? And laugh? That's not right. You need caregivers like him in our district. People like him and Mr. E. worry about our students. They worry about their future. They don't worry about their pockets. Because we all know that teachers are underpaid and they need to get paid more. It takes a lot to be a teacher.
Moving on on our agenda, Board President's Report, item five point one, Board President's Remarks. Good evening once again, ladies and gentlemen. First and foremost, I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank Ms. Servion and her staff. And I won't list them individually for fear that I might forget someone. Kudos on the tremendous amount of manpower and countless hours handling the situation with the cybersecurity attack on our district. Thank you for informing the potential victims in a timely manner, way ahead of the deadline of February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Also, thank you for the explanation provided to our board and the public by the legal team at Hostetler and Associates, who confirmed that the San Benito CISD conducted the investigation according to lawful timelines. I would also like to add that Lee Peña, Executive Director of Student Support Services, who is currently overseeing the Technology Department and her staff, will continue to answer and return phone calls to anyone still having questions or concerns about the cybersecurity attack and steps needing to be taken to ensure their protection in moving forward. That said, I trust that Ms. Servion and her staff will provide our community with updated information regarding our construction projects still lacking completion, the Performing Arts Center, and the NET that are way behind schedule. Completion costs have increased significantly, and this was a result of poor planning by previous administration and poor decision-making by previous board members, and they far exceed, it's, it's going to far exceed the original cost proposed to our taxpayers. Had the district hired construction experts experienced with the magnitude of these type of construction projects, I strongly feel that the district would not find themselves in this dilemma. Folks, look at, look around you. How many of you get paid before going to work? So I urge our residents to join in our board meetings, either in person or watch from home, as the meetings are aired live and also made available to the public, usually within twenty-four hours of the live stream. Rest assured that San Benito CISD will continue to move forward with the completion of these two projects and look for every avenue possible to maximize our taxpayer dollar. We move on to, uh, Superintendent's Report, item six point one. Ms. Servion?
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Tonight, we recognize a group of individuals that give up much of their time to serve our community and, most importantly, our children. Meetings that run long hours, difficult decisions, intense discussions, making unpopular decisions at times that even fam-, family and friends may question, prioritizing funding, and accepting calls from all of us at all hours of the night. We know you don't need rewards or accolades. We know that what you do for San Benito CISD, day in and day out, is selfless. You leave your ego at the door because our children come first. You are here to create a better tomorrow for our children and for our city. As the day closes and you finally get some well-deserved rest, know that we appreciate you more than words could ever describe and more than any gift could ever express. Thank you for staying focused on our children and thank you for supporting San Benito CISD. Congratulations, well-deserved month to be recognized. And I know some of you have been invited out to campuses and you get to have the best part of San Benito, our kids around you. Again, congratulations.
We move on to our report section of our agenda, item seven point one, Academic Health Report. Ms. Servion?
Yes, tonight I'm going to ask Dr. McGee to go ahead and walk us through our academic health report. This is a focus on secondary and what we're doing there to support our students' efforts.
Good evening, um, Board President Moreno, um, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Servion. Um, today, we're gonna give a secondary academic health report on two focus areas. And those two areas are credit by exam and TSI testing. So an initiative that we took this year is to have all of our eighth graders take the TSI exam. The TSI exam is necessary for students in Texas to be able to take college bearing, uh, our credit-bearing courses in colleges and universities. And the impact in real time is kids who wanna take our dual enrollment courses have to pass, or certain ones. They're, have a great limitation on what they can take if they don't pass TSI. Excuse me. So we decided to start in eighth grade to help them be best prepared. Also, we have our credit by exam, which for, uh, many of our students, they can get their high school credits by an exam as opposed to sitting through a course. So I'll start with TSI. And, um, what we wanna talk about first is what it takes to pass or get qualifying scores. And so if you see here, for ELAR, the score requirements, you need a score of nine forty-five or higher. And then, and you need a score five or higher on the essay. You can also, if you do take a diagnostic, you can score nine forty-five on ELAR, score five on the diagnostic, and a, or a score of five or higher on the essay. For math, you need to score a nine fifty or higher. Or if you do the diagnostic, you can cor-, score a six if you're below nine fifty on math. There are other types of exemptions for TSI. So for example, if you take an ACT test and you get a composite of a twenty-three with a nineteen at least in reading, those are examples of an exemption you can have. That being said, let's talk about how our eighth graders performed. So as noted, they did take the TSI, uh, test in the first week of, um, or opening weeks of November, um, December, December ninth through fourteenth. At Bertha Cabasa, two hundred and forty-four students tested. Now, two are E-ELAR complete. That means that they passed the sections as I mentioned above. Fourteen students, these are separate students, met the reading portion. And then one student out of that met the essay portion. So altogether, in terms of those two hundred and forty-four students, seventeen of those students did, you know, perform well. Um, and when I say well, just in terms of being complete or partially complete. Many of our students were also close and that makes an impact as well. So they all did a very, you know, just to even attempt a test is an achievement within itself. At Miller Jordan, two hundred and thirteen students were tested. Three are ELAR complete, meaning they passed the section, the ELAR section and the essay. Seven met the reading and one met the essay. And then for Riverside, out of a hundred and seventy-six, one student is complete and eleven met the reading section and one met the essay section. And I'll talk about how, what we're gonna do with these scores moving forward after I review the math. For math, Bertha Cabasa, out of the two hundred and thirty-eight students, seven were math complete. Miller Jordan, two hundred and two students, three were core, uh, math complete. And with Riverside, one hundred and seventy-six students, four were math complete. Just so you know, for the three middle schools, one from each grade level, or one from each stu-, um, school was, is now TSI complete. So that means they're ready to go, they could take, you know, um, dual enrollment courses starting in ninth grade if they so choose.
Dr. McGee, can I say something here?
Mm-hmm.
So really, when you stop and think about this, you have eighth graders right now that are already complete, they're TSI complete. So they can take, uh, dual enrollment courses. So that you know, I wanna give it some context. Uh, when my son was in eighth grade at a private school, all eighth graders took the, back then, it was a Thea or the Compass. And that's when they would start their freshman year, taking the dual enrollment courses. So just so you have some context, so that you will know that these children will be able to have six, seven math credits based on the fact that they're getting ahead of the game. And also, you're gonna talk about the diagnostics and what we're gonna do with that.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we definitely, we don't wanna miss students. Think about if we didn't offer TSI students, you would have three kiddos and, and potentially even more kiddos. Because remember, they can taste, take the test again. I just wanna, for example, the students who've already passed the reading section don't have to pass it again. Now they only have to pass the essay section and vice versa. So just think of the impact that we're having on kids that didn't exist before this initiative took place. So again, this is not a single ship. It is with the team, the principal, you know, our secondary director, Mrs. Amy Rodriguez, you know, Mrs., Mr. Alex Salinas, the high school team, uh, Mrs. Lopez, everybody getting together, our middle school principals, our teachers, to make sure our kids are being supported and given opportunity. And that excites me, and I know it excites you as well, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Servion. Um, so now, what are we doing to help these kids? Like, are we just using this data? No. What we're doing is there's a program we invested in called SMOO. We already use it at the high school. And the kids will take a diagnostic and it will help personalize and individualize the steps that they need to take to move forward. The eighth graders will utilize their time during third period, which for the middle schools is their flex period, um, once per week on Wednesdays to, or on another day designated by principals to work on SMOO. And then they'll take the test again in, uh, the spring. And so hopefully, we'll continue to increase students.
Dr. McGee, but with the SMOO, uh, they have to meet a threshold before you give them an allowance or a ticket? I don't know how you all are gonna roll that out, uh, before they take the test again, correct?
Yes, so they have to go through, when it prescribes an individualized program, you have to go through all of those steps and complete them successfully before you can take the exam again. So we're not just throwing everything at them and saying, you know, and not providing that support for them to take the exam and be successful.
On, I have a question. So on this TSI initiative, this was the first year that we did that for eighth grade?
Yes.
Okay. And that diagnostic test that's being done is that, this is after these results have come out, correct?
Yes.
Is there something, maybe next year, where they're gonna do the diagnostic before they take the test? That way they know what they need to focus on to study for the TSI exam?
We are looking into that, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Is this, I'm sorry, does this only mean that once a year, or are they taking the test multiple times?
They will take the test again in the spring. And now, our upper grade levels are also T S I, you know, have to be T S I-ready, and they do, can take it multiple times. But what we recognize is we're looking, how can we best support our students? And students, we're taking the T S I, taking the T S I, but it's like, what if I'm one, a person or a student that is one question away? It's a whole lot different from a student who's 10 questions away. So, that's why we needed to invest in a program like S M O O P, which tells you, very diagnostic, very intentional about the progress you need to make. And so, this way, we're being intentional because we want to have our students succeed. And by working with our eighth graders, we'll know, at the end of the day, more of them will be T S I-ready, which means they're going to be able to take college courses, which is more success for them in the future. You're welcome.
Sorry, one more question. At an eighth grade, all of the students were, it was a mandatory test that they took for the T S I? All students took it?
All students had to take it.
In the high school level, is it voluntary or is it also mandatory? Is it just for the students that are going to take the dual enrollment courses?
All students had an opportunity to take T S I and they go through, you know, if they want to take dual request courses, but still, even still, if they want to, if they're going to college, they have to pass T S I regardless, and so, they'll take it for that reason.
Okay.
Well, not only that, it's one of our C C M R ready standards, right? So, that would make the child's C C M R ready, as far as that goes, if they're complete. But I wanted to emphasize, and you said it, that I want to emphasize that this test itself is a diagnostic initially, because kids are already grouped. Like she said, some are one, you know, question away while others are really far off. So, what do we do differently? And then, we prescribe them S M O O P, and then, the days, the amount of days we have to schedule them, et cetera. Same thing with P S A, when they did the P S A. That was also comes back with a very thorough report, and it's diagnostic in essence as well.
I had a question, Ms. McGee, but I guess, I guess she pretty much answered it as far as this allows you to group our kids where they, where they, where they need additional resources, correct?
Particularly during that flex time and that third period, you know, that day of the week where they'll be working on it, yes.
And so, let me ask you this, Ms. McGee, because we all know that staffing has always been, you know, one of our concerns, but as far as this is concerned, how is it, right now, how do you see our staffing as far as for us to, to continue to support the support we need for our kids that need that additional support? Do we have the staff, you know, sufficient staff for that?
So, the flex time and intervention time was already built into the system, so their staff was there to support that. We're just introducing this additional day, and the principals has been awesome about supporting, making sure our kids meet their academic needs. So, the staffing is there for something that was already there, their intervention time, they're just floating in the S M O O P into that time.
Great, okay, awesome, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any additional questions I may answer? So, the next testing day, as you, or no, I'm sorry, not the next testing day, let me go to credit by exam. So, for credit by exam, what you'll see here, and this is the number, they get a half a credit for the credit by exam. At Bertha Cabasa, we have four students successful in Spanish I, two for Spanish II. At Riverside, we had 32 for Spanish I and 25 for Spanish II. And there is a larger bilingual population at Riverside. And at Veterans Memorial, we had two for Spanish I and four for Spanish II. And again, we do schedule credit by exams throughout the year, so you see that we will have this opportunity again on March 22nd. And again, this is to help students get those credits. If they're already can show success, then that leaves them time to take additional courses that can help prepare them for college, career, military, whatever they may choose.
Dr. McGee, I have a question. As far as students enrolled in Spanish I classes through the duration of a full school year, how many credits do they earn? Is it a half a credit or is it a full credit if they're taking it during the school year?
I think it's a full credit, but please let me check on that. It should be a full credit.
And the reason I'm asking, so if you, if you're taking a credit by exam, you're taking your Spanish I, I'm looking at it as a separate subject, right? Spanish I and Spanish II. So, if they, they get the credit by exam, my question would be, why are they only awarded half a credit?
I can check into that and read up, and I'll definitely let, you know, follow up with Ms. Sereyon.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question. Does the credit by exam affect a student's GPA?
No, it does not affect their GPA.
So, so say someone scores a 70 on a Spanish I credit by exam, that doesn't go into their GPA?
Not at all. What it does allow for is, for example, let's say, I'm a middle school student and I've taken credit by exam, Spanish I, Spanish II. One of the things that we're trying to do is promote having AP scholars by the time that they're sophomores. And so, think about a student who now is able to take AP Spanish Lang in ninth grade, then they could take AP Human Geo and AP Computer Science Principles. We support them to best success, and then, by 10th grade, they're proudly standing before you like we're AP scholars. That's our goal.
An AP scholar is?
A student who has scored three or, a score of three or higher on three or more exams.
And I guess to answer the question, because I did credit by exam a very long, I mean, for many years, you, there is a part one and part two, and you can get the full credit for English I and English II. We just have to select those, I mean, sorry, Spanish I and Spanish II.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. McGee.
Mm-hmm.
Moving on to item 7.2, financial update. Ms. Sereyon?
Yes, sir. I know that Ms. Mata is going to assist me, but she's going to stay seated as, that way she can go back and forth for me into different spreadsheets in case you have any questions. So, we do have our report. Now, as she mentioned last week during our committee meetings, we are starting to work on our budget. Starting to work on our budget, there's going to be some major decisions we need to make regarding our PAC and our NAT, and also the funding that we're going to have to utilize. So, can you get that going for me, Sergio? I think right now, it's just on... Thank you. So, on the next slide, if you look at this slide, and I just referenced our forensic audit, and if you remember, Mr. Kastner did give us a projected amount that we would end up spending, and that projected amount was connected to June 30th, 2022. Now, you can also see the estimated amounts that we had when we went out for our bond. So, if you look at your indoor facility, you see that he projected that we would spend 6.52 million, but the max was 4 million. 11.03 million for aquatic center or an auditorium, and the max would have been 5.5. And then, right now, performing arts, and then again, he's looking at June 2022, 24.74 million, again, the threshold being 31 million. And then, for the project management services, it would be 1.72 million, totaling 44.2 million. Of course, our budget was 40 million, and you can already see by looking at this table that initially, when we went out for the bond and we delineated what we would be spending, we did not put anything down for project management services. So, and that does come out of the bond. And I did reference page eight of the presentation from the forensic audit. So, we go to the next slide. Thank you, Sergio. What I did was Monica and I sat down, Ms. Mata and I sat down, and we went through every expenditure for each one of the facilities up to this point. So, we know that the multipurpose indoor facility is done, it's completed. And if you can see, as you can see, we went ahead and we delineated every expenditure that's connected to the indoor facility, which comes out to seven, I'm sorry, 6,715,370. Mr. Kastner's projection was 6.52, but it ended up being over 6.7. And again, we have everything that has been completed up to this point, and that is the final cost. So, we go to the next slide. We will look at our PAC, at our Performing Arts Center. And we also see here, we specifically delineated even the pre-construction phase, all the way down to everything that has been expended to this point, to January 15, 2023. You can already see, and I annotated, encumbrance, that means the purchase order is generated. So, that's the money that is going to be going out. So, specifically, you'll see our engineering services, you'll see our entrances, you'll see our design fees, our, now, the entrance, you'll see one for 19,844, that's just for the design, and then, you'll see the actual entrance, 208,482,33. And then, we'll go into our A I fees for ROFA, that's architect and engineering fees, that's 1.6 million. Davila Construction, we have an encumbrance, we paid out 72,884,000 as well to Davila, and we are paying out 15.4 million to Davila Construction. If we look at Raba Kissner, 69,000, and then, we look at ROFA, 364,000. The total amount we've expended up to this point, including encumbrances, because purchase orders have been generated and have been approved, is 24,786,943.
So, can I, before you move on to the next, next slide, can we go back to, no, to this one? So, right now, we've already expended 24 million, almost 25, but 24,786,000. So, this is to date.
To date.
But this is, this doesn't cover all the expenses that are outstanding, that we still need to have to be able to complete the PAC. Is that correct? Am I understanding this correct?
So, there will be a slide where I will tell you everything we still need.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
And the encumbrance is to be paid, but it's already calculated?
The purchase order's in, yes.
Ma'am, I got a question. Do we, on this, on this slideshow that you're going to provide, you're going to provide a timeline also of all the delays that occurred?
I have another change order about, for delays as well.
Okay.
So, on the next slide, we have the auditorium. And here, you can see that, again, we specifically delineate every expenditure, starting with the pre-construction phase, again, going to architect and engineer fees, entrances, and you're going to see the entrances kind of like mimic each other, because all we did was divide them in half. So, 19,000 for the PAC, 19,000 for the NAT, 200,000 for the PAC, 200,000 for the NAT, because there are two entrances, one is going to the frontage and one is going to the street on the side of SEEM Academy. So, and then, it goes further. So, then, you will again see that we have encumbered 5.4 million for Davila Construction, 100,000 for Raba Kissner, and then, for ROFA, 102,000. And, yes, 120,000, sorry. So, the total cost at this point, and this is to the penny, that's the way Ms. Mata wanted to do it, to the penny, is 11,236,927.72, okay? Next slide. So, then, we also have the Brighton Group, and at this point, we have paid 1,250,000. This is as of January 15, 2023, and this is for this project. Next slide. So, this is everything that's still pending, if that, that is what Mr. Moreno was asking. So, we did go out for civil engineering, the G M P advertised on 11423. This is for, we're going to pay for the services, and then, we have all these other things we still need to pay for. Again, still not, not part of any of the other totals that we have been talking about. We still need landscaping, sidewalks, parking lot, drainage, gutters, inside curbs, electrical, utilities, and final connections to the buildings. And you can see that I go ahead and I delineate all of that, because we're going to start going out and finding out how much each of those things are going to cost us. To give you a little bit of perspective, landscaping for the multipurpose was 54,000, which is a much smaller area, you know, a couple of years ago. So, you can imagine that including a sprinkler, sprinkler system and including all the landscaping is going to be costly. Also, still pending, and again, still not part of the expenditures, are audiovisual, except for the theater, we need the sound system, we need furniture, fixtures, and equipment, including decorative elements such as lamps and paintings, tables, desks, chairs, computers, laptops, copiers, printers, projection devices, televisions, phones, and P A's. We do have two that are not complete yet. We have the design complete, but the work's not complete for the curb in and curb out. So, that will be an extra expenditure. We also have technology, we need access points, fiber installation, and network switches. We also need access control with magnetic doors, security, camera, motion devices, alarm systems, Wi-Fi, we need all the connections. Program management will get 4.5% of construction cost, over 30 million, vertical construction from, and that's for Brighton Group, and then, vertical construction for ROFA would get 9.5, anything above that bottom line for PAC, and that's just construction, and 8.74% for NAT over construction cost. We also have the horizontal design by G D J that's still pending. So, all of these expenditures are still pending.
I have a question. We went out, you, me, Mr. Silva, Mr. Gorona, were there at the trailer a couple months ago, right? It has to be, what, six months ago, maybe, more than that? And we discussed going to market for these things back then. Why are we just going to market right now?
Well, what ended up happening is that, again, meeting, going to the O A Cs and going to the project manager, we had, for example, we went to the civil engineering because we were not getting the best prices possible, bottom line. So, that's what we're going to go ahead and we're going to do now.
So, you're telling me that we did go to market back then when we went, were at the trailer?
We didn't, we didn't go to market, no.
So, we have never gone, even though we discussed going to market back then, and I tried putting it on the agenda, and it never got to, got to the agenda.
We did not go to market for any of these things, because we were still trying to get all these other things in place. So, in other words, there's no use in going for the, like, right now is a good time to start with the tables, desks, and allocating that amount of money and what we actually need. What we need first is to get that civil engineering done. And we need to do all of that right now, so that we can see that it's completed by the deadline.
Some of these things were, what was I saying? Some of these things that you have here are going to be additions that are automatically besides the construction. The construction is one phase, so as far as you're, you're coming with tables, desks, chairs, computers, laptops, copiers, printers, that is not included in your construction, correct?
No, but it's going to be included in our budget, and this...
Yes, no, that, I mean, I understand that, but I'm saying, that was something that should have been planned for at the very beginning, because this is something totally separate, as far as your landscaping. Construction is one item, and that's going to be your building. Everything else that you're talking about here, these are additions that needed to have been included.
But they can be purchased through bond funds.
Right, but I'm saying...
If they had been, if it had been, you know, delineated and they had been budgeted, they can be purchased through bond funds, but we can't anymore, because we don't have any money.
So, I'm saying, that's the reason why I was asking a little earlier, as far as, you know, once again, seeing the timeline and all this, you know, the delays, you know, you know, as far as the civil engineering delay, why wasn't it done earlier? Why is it done now? You know, price escalation has gone up, we all know that. You know, it's affecting, it's affecting the whole country. So, at the end of the day, that's the reason why I was asking for that, because of course, there's price escalation everywhere. But it just, there's delay after delay, you know, or there seems to be some delay. But the thing is, we need to understand, and maybe it would be nice if in the committee meetings, you know, you do get these people in here, so we can all ask them questions as far as why, so everybody's on the same page and understands the dynamics of what's going on behind the scenes and what's causing the delays, you know, whatever that is, because we're not in construction.
Okay, so I can tell you specifically and talk about civil engineering, and I don't know, Mr. Weller would like to interject as well, but with the civil engineering, we wanted to make sure we got the best price, and that's what we haven't been getting. So, basically, what happens is we haven't had a hold of what is being, I guess, most financially advantageous to the district. So, now, we are going out, we're getting seal proposals, and Davila Construction is more than welcome to also submit a seal proposal, but now, we have a competitive seal proposal. So, we can go in there and we can look at those seal proposals and get the best price for the district, so...
What I can add, yeah, what I can add on that point, Ms. Sereyon, is just to say that we had conversations with the, with Brighton, we had conversations with ROFA, we had conversations with G D J about the way for the district to get the most competitive, best pricing for the remaining civil package, and the recommendation among everyone, the consensus... And the recommendation among everyone, the consensus one hundred percent of everyone. Uh, the construction uh, consultant that we hired was for the district to go out and go through a competitive seal proposal process, so that the remaining phases of work that still were to be bid, were gonna be subjected to uh, competitive bidding, a competitive market situation. Where the district will know that it's getting competitive pricing. Um, and the civil um, engineering plans weren't completed until twenty twenty-two. So uh, the district's basically acting uh, at this time to make sure that it's taking the steps necessary to get the best price that they can.
So for clarification, the civil engineering prices that you're talking about were prices that Davila was giving us?
N- no, Davila has not prepared a bid on that at this point.
Okay, because you're telling me something and there's something being said over here.
I was gonna say, there's, there's two different answers that we're getting, so which one is a correct answer?
What, what they're men- mentioning is, I interjected, I, I made a, uh, I, I kind of made a moaning. I, I, I understood that Davila had presented a bid or, or there was numbers already proposed and but yet we're going, and so am I, is that erroneous on my part?
Mr. Board President, so Davila has not prepared a GMP proposal on the remaining civil package. Um, Davila will be invited among the other vendors to bid on the civil package. But you know, given where the project is budget-wise and some of the numbers that Ms. Viall has been going over, the consensus among everyone was, look, I mean, it's important for this remaining civil work to, for the district to get the absolute best market price it can.
Okay, I need some clarify.
Dip, dip into any, any district funds, and so that was the reason we're going out to bid.
I need some clarification on that, so what are those numbers that Ms. Viall is going over?
So basically, what we're saying is that in the past, or like Davila would just automatically do the civil engineering, and we wouldn't go out for seal proposals. We decided to go out for seal proposals to get the best possible price. We don't know what those seal proposals look like yet, because we advertised them this Sunday, and then they'll be advertised one more Sunday that follows. And then we'll have an administrative team that comes together, look at those seal, seal proposals, see if they meet the requirements we need. And then the person or the company that has the best proposal and it's most advantageous to the district, that's what we're gonna go with.
This will be coming out of our own budget.
Doesn't automatically just go.
Own budget?
Out of our budget.
So I understand that, I understand the process of the competitive seal propos- proposals. But you kept saying that we didn't, we don't have, we're not getting good numbers for some civil engineering, those are the numbers that I don't.
No, I said that, well, maybe I misspoke, I mean, we want the competitive seal proposal so that we can get the best price.
Okay, that I understand, I just didn't, I needed clarification on because you kept saying that we're not getting the best prices for civil engineering, and that's where I needed to know, well, what prices are we getting for civil engineering as of now? But as of now, there has been no pricing for civil engineering.
Well, eh, there's more to the story, but ultimately, we're going out for seal proposals.
Which is what we agreed on.
And yeah, I understand that process.
So.
This is the same, the same topic we talked about enclosed and discussed why this was in the best interest of the district.
Correct.
To, to go ahead and make sure that this remaining phase, you know, given where we are budget-wise, is being bid subject to market competitiveness. And that's obviously the best way to get the best price you can.
So, so Mr. Weller, I got a question for you, because you've had the contracts for two years now since you've been here, and we've kind of gone back and forth on this whole situation. And when the, when the, when these, when these uh, these contractors were, were um, rewarded these projects. Okay, from the beginning, from the onset, it was a, I, I, but, and I'm not a construction guy, but uh, they're at risk. We've talked about that, right, so if they go over, it's on them, correct?
For the parts of the project that they bid for and that the district has agreed to a price for, yes.
Okay, so they're still, Davila and Rofa, they're still that, you know, uh, we talked about them going over, we talked about all this going over. But uh, they agreed to a price and they gotta stick to it, correct?
That's correct, um, subject to the terms of their contract, they need to stick to the price in the GMP that the district agreed to with them, but the difference being, there is not a GMP agreement. There is no, there are no agreements on numbers with Davila for the, this civil part of the project that we're talking about right now. We have a GMP with Davila for the vertical construction, but not with the civil, remaining civil package that we're discussing right now.
Okay, so I guess for, for everybody to understand, Mr. Weller, I mean, of, of course, you know, you have experience in this, but we don't. So I guess my, our question here, and my question is, um, is when should this civil, this whole civil process have gone out? Because they, these guys, you know, the guys that got, that awarded this contract know and understand that they have to be within a certain amount of, you know, certain price to build these, you know, buildings, right? So I guess, when is it, when is that timeline? Um, when, when should that have happened? It's very obvious, it's a little late in the game right now. So, but I know there was a lot of other circumstances that came to play, so can you just please explain to everybody for, for, for clarification how that works?
Well, I mean that's a long answer, um, to that question perhaps. But traditionally, the way that you bid a project is you gather all of the civil plans, you gather all of the architectural plans. And you bid it all out at the beginning of the project. And you have one GMP that would apply to everything. That's the, the, the customary way of doing it. Um, in this case, you had different parts of the project, where you had the design plans weren't completed until different times. For example, you had, you didn't have the civil plans done until twenty twenty-two. So, um once they were completed in twenty twenty-two, uh, the district has looked at them and has put them out, putting them out for bid at this point.
Okay, yeah, because I was just a little confused, I guess, you know, hearing everybody talk, it just, it seems to me for the past two years, it's just escalating. The price is just going up, so I don't risk decisions that the board made to add certain things to these, to the, to the patent act. Or, or to itemize all that, just to make sure that we're all on the same page here as far as what has been, you know, what, in the past few years, what has been voted on by this board uh, to approve. Um, I know a lot of decisions in the past two years have been made, so that's the reason why I'm kind of, you know, I want a clarification on that. But no, it's, it's a, I mean, it's a work in progress, it's very obvious, but um, I don't wanna beat a dead horse right now, so I guess we can just, you know, uh, continue and, and, and see if we can get some clarification along the way, but thank you sir, appreciate it.
Just to clarify, Ms. Viall, this civil engineering is not part of the bond project, right?
Yeah, it's part of the bond project, but we need to pay for it.
We need to pay for it out of our own pocket.
Well, we pay so far. Yes, so all of this, above and beyond.
Your landscaping, your sidewalks, and parking lot.
Mm-hmm, great drainage.
That was not included.
It's not part of the construction.
That was not included in the, in the bond money, or in the project.
Correct, well, not anymore because we're over budget.
Could we invite these people to come in and give us a timeline? Because most of this board wasn't, except for one person that was here prior. Give us an actual breakdown, just like you did on that timeline with the parking lot. Could we invite them and have them come in and do that for us? That way, because there was delays, and that way, not only we know, but the public will know what delays and what, what took place and how long were, was everything on hold? Did, that pushed the whole project back also.
Mr. Corona, you know, to your point there, just what you were just saying, for, you know, so last, in July of twenty twenty-one the board considered a GMP on the vertical construction package, because you had design plans in your hands at that point. So you had an opportunity to go out and do that. But this board did not have, the civil plans weren't done yet. So there was no opportunity to bid that part of the project at the same time that you bid the vertical construction.
Was it just because we didn't ask for the civil designs?
I don't know why the civil wasn't done, uh.
Mr. Weller, ba- but basically, what you said previously, just a few minutes ago. The norm or, or their best practice would be, all of this should have been included at the onset. And once again, I guess what we continue to say, and like Mr. Lopez said, I don't want to be, beat a dead horse either. But the point has been clearly made that, that these decisions were not very smart decisions that, that were made. Otherwise, uh, if, if they, if they had been smart, if they had gotten and a project manager with the experience to constru- uh, on construction of this magnitude that would have incorporated and known all this stuff was part of the original plan. We wouldn't be, and I, I remember way back when I first got on the board, something, a term that I don't even know how to pronounce correctly. We, it seems like we're piecemealing it or whatever, a- and that all of this stuff, the landscaping, the sidewalks, the parking lot, the streets. When you, when you, and again, I'm by no means a construction manager, I don't know construction either, but I do fully understand that when you have a, a, a construction project this big with three buildings, all of this should, should have been included at the beginning. A- as a best practice, is that a fair statement?
Well, I, and I'm not a professional construction administrator either. Um, what I have been told by design folks is that the, the normal way of bidding a ground-up construction project is to get all the design plans ready and get pricing at the beginning, uh, at one time. I, I don't know that it happens like that in all instances, but that's, that's my understanding of the traditional way of knowing about it.
So, so, so Mr. Weller, so once again, um, uh, to Ramiro's point, uh, we've had, we've had these contracts for two years. Um, you know, uh, did you notice this two years ago when you got these contracts and noticed the way, the way they were, they were written? Or did you, when, when, when did you notify, I mean, or understand the fact is that this, the civil engineer was not part of the design or? Because we're not, we're not construction people here, but you know, the thing is, you've had the contracts, I mean, no disrespect, but for two years, so with your experience.
Well, well, I mean, you know, we looked at the GMP in twenty twenty-one, but, but, you know uh, I, I'm not working on the project full-time, Mr. Lopez, I mean, that, that's what you have your design folks for, that's why you have a contractor. And that's why you have a, a project manager.
But if you're, if you're, if you saw him and, if you saw that, that contract and you said it was the best, best practice, like Mr. Moreno's saying. Then you, I'm assuming you would recommend to the board, like, hey, listen, there's a situation here with, with price escalation, and maybe we need to take this, take this on sooner rather than later. Because eventually, at one point or another, somebody thought it was a good idea to go the, the route they went. You know what I'm saying? That, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of this.
Yeah, I, I, I have a quarter as to the status of the civil plans in the past.
Alright.
Where they were, when they were gonna come in.
Okay, sir, thank you, appreciate it.
I think that the thing that's important to note is that we were depending on the project manager to ensure that all of this got done. Recently, well, since I've been here and I've had Mr. Saldana and Mr. Cole go to the OCA meetings. And the last one they went to, I knew that it was incorrect, what was being said, and it had to do with the civil engineering. And it had to do with the landscaping, sidewalks, et cetera. And so when Mr. Saldana, uh, you know, debriefed me on what was going on, I said, that's not true, that's not what's happening here. This should have been at the onset, uh, Sergio, can you go, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four. Right there, so had we gone at the beginning, and I hate to turn back the clock to the beginning of time of the bond. And we go back and we get these cost estimates from people that are experts for the pre-bond planning process and not look at old data by calling around and finding out how much something's gonna cost without it being specifically delineated and know what it would encompass with that forty million dollar bond. We would have been able to include all these costs and also in their calculations, they would have thought of development costs, inflation costs. While you cannot project the COVID, you could have put in a percent of inflation, and you also would have had specific design plans. So when you have those specific design plans, that's when you have all that other stuff from the go that says, hey, you need a parking lot, you need the curbs, you need the gutter, you need all this stuff.
The, I'm sorry to interrupt, those weren't included on the.
No, they're not.
There was no parking, no, no curb.
Here we are today, yes, here we are in twenty-three.
Strictly just the building then.
One of the questions that has been brought up, and, and, and pardon my ignorance, but one of the questions that I've been brought up by, by a couple of people, not, not a multitude of people. You know, when we go back and look at our project manager, I'm, I'm being asked, okay, so what the community seems to think is that, you know, we keep again, beating a dead horse, we, we look at the one point two five million dollars that was paid out to our project manager. So some people in our community are assuming that out of that one point two five million dollars that we paid this gentleman or, or this company, that out of that one point two five million, we're, we're paying the architects and we're paying everybody. No, we're not, he got paid one point two billion, one point two five million dollars for being a supervisor to supervise this project, and once again, as I mentioned in my board report. How many of us go to work and, or, or get paid before we even go, go to work? So that one point two five million dollars is a heck of a lot of money. A heck of a lot of money to supervise a project, once again, my favorite word of this magnitude. And so, you know, it just, it doesn't, doesn't make sense. And so right now, I think as a board, as a community, we need to pull together to, uh, I, I, other things that I've heard from community members is, you know what? Why don't we just abort the project? That, that's not what we're here to do, at least not in my opinion, we need to finish those projects. Those projects need to come to fruition, and, and now with this uh, uh, competitive seal bids that we're going through. We're trying to get the best possible bang for our buck. And it, and it's our, it's, it's our community, what we promise our community, they're looking forward to having these buildings completed. And so I think moving forward, that's what we need to do.
And I think, I think, I think what we need to do, I'm sorry, Sir.
Yes, I have a question, I wasn't here doing all this times, I just came on the board about a month ago, as everybody knows. My question is, when was this supposed, building supposed to be complete?
The building was supposed to be complete and I, we went back and looked at it, uh, was it twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one? But then in twenty twenty, I think that's when some of the COVID hit. Well, some of it may have been, but this, not having this specifically already in there, is not COVID.
So what percent of the buildings are complete?
Right now, I'm gonna go over some change orders, so I can tell you exactly where the timeline is, Sergio, can you go back to my original slide?
Okay.
So that we can go through all of that. So I just want, because we're here to discuss a budget, right? I mean, I wanna make sure we understand that, you know, uh, one, one forward there. No matter what, we need this stuff, right? We're going to need this for the pack and the nat, to make it come to life and for it to be a state-of-the-art thing. Whether they forgot to put in the curbs and the sidewalks and the gutters and the electrical, this is where we are now. You know, and what we, we're trying to do now, remember when you all at the last meeting said, you know what, Ms. Viall, you're gonna be spearheading this? You know what, go out, so this is what we did, we went into and looked at our civil engineering and I, we could just give it to someone that's already there. Or do we go out and try to find the best price, that's where we're at with the civil engineering. And once that civil engineering firm gets on board, then that's when we're gonna do all of this stuff. And then that's when we can have a better price on what it's going to take to get it up and running. Because we know we need a parking lot, we know we need sidewalks, we know we need drainage and gutters and inside curbs and landscaping, well, I guess we wouldn't need landscaping, but we need the electrical, you know, and utilities. Now, what is it that we can do without? Well, that's what we're gonna have to decide, because this is saying everything that we need uh, at this point. And then understanding what that's going to cost the district, right? So on the next slide.
Ms. Viall, I have a, before you advance, go back to that, go back one. Okay, so when we went to that meeting where Dr. Cruz, Ms. Seel, myself and, and you, and I believe it was, that was it, right, there was there? Um, the access points for fiber installation, I thought that was discussed and that was already negotiated on. So you have it on here, but I thought that was part, part of the construction, because you had your technology. You had two technology people there who were ta- who talked about it. And uh, they talked about where the home runs and so forth, we spoke of those rooms. Another thing I know that as far as television, some of those devices, they said they couldn't bid on those because if had they bid on them two years ago, two years advance, they'd be outdated. So now, so now that, so that's what I'm saying, so, I mean, I, I, I understand what, where you're going with it, right? But I'm just saying, so, some of these items here were kind of foreseen, they were, they were gonna have to add at the end.
Okay, so I agree with you, that we would have to add our laptops, our computers, et cetera, at the end. And then that's why I said this is a good time to go out there for that. But the bottom line is that typically, you leave a, an amount of money from your bond so that you can purchase these stuff, right? But we don't have that, because we don't have any more money left. And as far as all of this stuff that I'm putting from Tel, Telpro, no, we still need to go ahead and purchase that or pay for it. It's not included.
So question, I have a question. So all this time, uh, no one from this construction company has come forward to give you an explanation, or when was the last time they came? I'm asking.
On the OCA meetings, they do come forward and we do talk about things like this. And that's why I'm gonna show you what's coming up with the change orders as well.
Okay, thank you.
Depending on what you all do.
Is it done quarterly or?
It's done monthly.
And we get the monthly packet in our email, we can make sure that you get those packets, Mr. Corona.
I would think when a project is gonna start, the plans are made, the plans are approved by everybody, and there shouldn't be all this extras. I mean, this plan should have been approved and signed off, start, I need pricing. This, that's a lot of pending stuff. That's a lot of pending stuff that was missed by, I don't know who. But somebody, not, not, that's too much stuff missing right there.
So, so, so Ms. Revion, the, once again, I think what we need to do is since we're not privy to those meetings, those monthly meetings, uh, I think what we need to do, cause I mean, it's been, I haven't seen Brighton Group here, I haven't seen Helles, I haven't seen, I mean, not Helles, I haven't seen, uh, I haven't seen them come do a presentation of the board at all. So now we're all here speculating, we're all making comments about certain things and we're all going by this, but the board hasn't been, kept abreast of what's going on. It's all third party. So for my?
But I am now in charge of the, of the.
Yes, I understand that.
They're coming to me.
And she is making us aware.
I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, okay? All I'm saying is that it would be nice if they were coming to the board to a committee meeting so we can ask them the questions ourselves and we can get firsthand knowledge of what's exactly going on.
One of the things, Ms. Revion, I, I'd like to mention and, and, and I know, again, you know, I, the question might rise like, how does Mr. Moreno know? Because I'm the board president and there's some things that, that are shared with me, but maybe, maybe something that you may be able to divulge at this time in public is that, and I wanna give Mr. Mr. Silva credit as well because he has invited Brighton over and we, they were actually scheduled to come in and to present to us during the committee meetings. But then when you had your discussions, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but when you had your discussions with Mr. Saldana over there and with Mr. Cole and whoever's on this committee, and you're talking also to Mr. Palacios and the Brighton Group, the information that they're providing you at your, whatever that committee is called, is inaccurate information, then why do we need somebody to come up here and provide inaccurate information to our community? That's why Mr. Silva and them decided to get them off, because they were providing inaccurate information to that committee. So I'm not, I'm not saying that it's a, a bad idea to bring them in.
If, if we know it's inaccurate information, can't we call them out on it when they're here?
We did. But this is not the place, that's the, why you have those AOC meetings. And that is why, that's where we discuss, like, this is what we're gonna do, this is not what we're gonna do. And that's why you went ahead and you passed the baton to me so that they would come to me and give me all those reports. And then I would come forward and give you our suggestions. This, I didn't just come up with this list or neither did Ms. Mata. We went through everything to come up with this list.
Oh, I'm not saying that your list is inaccurate at all.
But that, that's pretty much, we pulled the plug because there were some inaccuracies. There was some conflicting information. We did meet with them. Mr. Weller was there when we met online to make, you know, to make sure we were all on the same page. And then maybe, yes, you're, we can bring them next time, once we're all back, you know what I'm saying? On board and all rowing in the same direction.
But Ms. Revion, but they're bonded by the contract, so they cannot be misleading the board. I mean, that's, that's not, I mean, I understand they probably can, I'm not saying they're not, but I mean, you know, that, that's just anyone. You know, they gotta come and they gotta answer to the board and ask questions. I mean, we, we need to be informed. So, so for them, for, for them to be saying that, you know, they're telling us inaccurate information, well, I don't know what inaccurate information, I've never heard of anything inaccurate information that they've been saying or anyone's been saying. So that's the only reason why I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not here to cause a debate on who needs to show up or doesn't show up, but for this, for this project, since there's, since there's so much, you know, he said, she said, I think those people that are getting paid in, in a contractual agreement, you have an obligation to come speak to the board or answer questions at least.
Okay, so I don't know, there's a lot of he said, she said, because I think we've been very definitive. I do know that maybe Mr. Weller in executive session, we could bring up the conflicting information that we had to discuss uh, when it came to the civil engineering and the expectations, et cetera. But I do not feel that we, I do not feel comfortable discussing it here, if you know, I mean.
Well, there's certainly some topics that are probably more appropriate for closed. Like the change orders that have been, that have been proposed.
Correct.
You know, those are proposals to change the contract, requests for additional funds. You know, those would normally be handled behind closed doors because it's a negotiating situation. And so those would naturally occur in closed, the board would be briefed in closed, we've done that. We briefed the board about assessments of those types of matters and where we think we're headed with them. And, uh, you know, they're not resolved yet, certainly, but those are definitely closed session items. And that's been some of the discussion, uh, that's been a big part of some of the recent meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weller.
So on the next slide. Thank you. So this is a pending change order and this is something that we're still looking into. I know that, uh, Mr. Weller is also assisting with it as well as others. We have a 1.2, almost 1.3 million change order, uh, for material cost escalation. And you can see that it's delineated by steel, roofing, openings, finishing, furnishings, which happened to be the seating. Now that was included. The seating, uh, in the auditorium, the fire suspension, and then the heating, ventilating and air conditioning. So I did put an example on the bottom because I wanted us to understand that when we increase or the price on something like this change order that's almost 1.3 million, Brighton Group would get 4.5 million, I mean, 4.5% of that 1.3. And then RFA would get 9.5% of that as well. So that would be 58,000 and then 122,772. See, all of that goes into the cost. All of that could have been part of the bond cost. And that's where I, I think that there's a fallacy. Uh, so then the total change order, if you really look at it, it would be 1.4, or 1, 1,473,27085. And then again, this is just with me putting it there, the Brighton and RFA, so that I could eat, illustrate to you what that means.
This is just for the PAC?
This is just a change order for the PAC. 1.2, 992,341 million. Okay, we go to the next slide. So then we look at the total cost as of January 15. You look at the indoor facility performing arts center and auditorium. Uh, you look at the amount that we've paid out already, 43,989, two, I'm sorry, 43,989,241,34. Uh, with the change, change order, that would be 45,281,58419. Currently, uh, we have paid out to Brighton Group 1.25. Uh, with anything over 30, 30 million, the total, we would be paying out to Brighton Group. So this is already here, right? We've already gone over the 30 million. We're at 44 million. So that would mean that Brighton would get another over half a million, so the total to Brighton would be 1.8, And then if with, we approve the change order, it would be, uh, 1,874,763. With RFA is 2,835,155. And then with the change order, RFA would be at 2,957,928. So all of this is something that we're going to have to pay out. And so this is, as we're developing our budget, I want us to be very cognizant of the fact that this has to be paid, right? And how are we gonna pay it? From fund balance. That's where it's gonna have to come from. If we go to the next slide, you'll see that there's also a change order, which we're also working on, where they're asking for a date of completion extension. So they are asking for the PAC to adjust it from completion on July 21st, 23 to December 28th, 23. Um, they do cite one, you know what, we didn't get the permit till 10/4/21 instead of 9/17/21. And then we have 80 days of weather. Uh, so they are asking for that extension to the end of the year, basically. With the NAT, it was projected, and again, this has been moved back. I can get a timeline of every time we have adjusted the timeline. So I can do that for you all as well. April 14th, 2023 was when it was projected to be completed, so we thought we would be able to open up the year with the two new facilities in use for our students, but they're also asking for September 19th, 2023. So again, they cite that they got their building permit on 10/4/21 and they're asking for 96 days of weather. So the total delay is 135 days, hence the, uh, the change order for the date of completion extension. So these are two change orders we're, we're working on currently. Next slide.
Ms. Revion.
Yes, go back.
What they're asking, the change order is for material to continue on the construction?
No, it's, they're saying it rained. And so these are the days now, we just have to go back and check that those days are appropriate to extend.
If you go back one more slide, please.
One more, Sergio? Not that one, one more?
Oh wait, here, go, I'm sorry. So we change order for material cost escalation. I thought we had agreed that the, the cost of material was already sealed in, that was done with.
We have not approved it as of now. We're still, uh, going through that material cost.
But I thought six, I'm sorry, I thought maybe six, eight months ago when they came in, did a presentation, they told us, if you guys go ahead and approve this now, we purchased all the beams, everything we need, and that way there's not gonna be any additional charges.
This, uh, this change order is dated further back, isn't it, Mr. Weller? It is from February 22. It's the same one.
It's still part of?
It, it's, it's been amended a bit and I'm having a little bit of hard time hearing you, Mr. Gomez, I'm not exactly sure. Is it everything you were saying right there?
I, I was saying that I, I'm kinda remembering vaguely, but six, two, eight months ago, they came in, they did a presentation and they said, if the, if the board goes ahead and approves this now, we can, the material that we need to purchase to finish these buildings will be purchased at this price and that way there's not gonna be any additional charges or any increase if material goes up, cause that was when the cost of wood had just gone up, skyrocketed. So they came and did that presentation. I thought the whole board, we had already agreed on it. We had voted that yes, we could do that. So I thought, so this is cost escalation. I thought that was already s- set in stone as far as what we had agreed on.
Yeah, I, I don't believe the board ever voted.
It's been about six, eight months ago.
Yeah, I, the, the change order was presented last year and then it was updated uh, in September of last year, but the board has not voted on that change order. Uh, there may have been some other materials, uh, that you're, that you're.
Could we, could we go back and investigate? Cause I believe it was, it was on material. I remember them saying that if we purchased it now, the price of steel was going up just as the price of, of wood had gone up and we had already agreed and we voted on that.
I re, I remember that, that meeting vaguely, but I do remember that they made, came in and did a presentation and, and I know it was discussed and open, but I don't know that that was ever voted on.
It wasn't.
I don't think it was voted on, but, but you know what, to, to be safe, we can go back and look at previous board meetings to, to find out, but I really don't think that the board voted on it.
Cause if we had agreed on something, we could hold it.
No, Mr. Mr., and Mr. Gomez, we can discuss that, that, probably a, a closed session discussion. But the board has not voted on that change order.
So this is a change order again. It goes with the structural steel, the roofing, the openings, the finishings, the furnishings, the fire suspension, heating, ventilating and air conditioning. I just wanted you to see it one more time. That's what they're asking for.
Question.
And you know steel's gone up a lot.
But we're not obligated to that, right? That's just, they're just submitting it because of the escalation.
Well, we're.
But.
Cause they missed their date.
Mr. Gomez has a question.
Oh, question, I have a question. What's, what's the 96 days for? Is that rain delays or what?
Yes, sir.
From, from, I was gonna say, that's a lot of days.
And then the permit, they're citing that we got the permit in October, but we should have, uh, they got the permit, the city gave them the permit in November. I mean, I'm sorry, October.
What's, what's the?
Sergio, poor Sergio. One more? See, here they're saying that, uh, they could not proceed because a permit was not approved until October 4th, 21, instead of, uh, September 17, 21.
But the 96 days is of what date to what date?
So that is delineated to us in a, like they're, so we have to go back and check if those are viable, uh, rain days that were submitted.
That's why, I was gonna suggest that to see if in fact it.
I mean, not me personally, but somebody that knows, you know?
That equates to eight days.
And not to jump in again, but, but it's really up to Davila to establish that those rain days affected the progress of work. It's up to Davila to show to the district that they're delayed.
They have all those documented somewhere. We just have to verify them.
That would equate to eight days a month.
Correct.
Almost two weeks.
So what I learned from Mr. Workman was that there may, there may have been rain or et cetera, but it depends what work they were doing. So is it viable to say that they need the extension or not? And that would be something that we're evaluating to see if they need these extensions. We have not approved or brought it to the board to approve the extension. So, next slide. I already reviewed that and this again, uh, go back one, Sergio, this again, just goes back to the fact that, you know, doing that all upfront, it would have been part of it and we would have known that we were going to include it or, you know, whittle down some of what we were doing. I know that there have been things that we've done. Uh, for example, the indoor facility, uh, included more yards, you know, and we extended that. So maybe having more of this upfront, we would have known, okay, well, maybe we don't wanna do that because, you know what, we have these things that are still pending. But right now, we're at this point and we're looking at our budget and we're looking at our fund balance. And we are going to finish this because our kids deserve the PAC and the NAT and they deserve a state of the art facility. So that's why we were so meticulous with ensuring that we had everything that we needed. You know, delineate it for you all. And something else may come up, I mean, I don't know. But as of now, that is the list. Monica, did you have anything else or do you think I covered mostly everything?
No, I think you covered everything we discussed.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Ms. Revion, thank you for that presentation. It was very enlightening.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, consent agenda items under academic services, item 8.1, request approval of the memorandum of understanding between Samanito CISD and Texas State Technical College Dual Enrollment Program for the 2324 school year. Are there any questions? Consent. Under finance, 9.1, request approval to accept gifts bequest for the 2223 school year. Questions? Consent. 9.2, request approval of budget amendments for the 2223 school year. Questions? Consent. 9.3, request approval of cash account report. Questions? Consent. 9.4, request approval of comparison of revenue and expenditures to budget. Any questions? Consent. Item 9.5, request approval of tax collection report. Questions? Consent. Item 9.6, request approval of check dispersalence for the month of December 2022. Questions? Consent. Item 9.7, request approval of quarterly investments report. Questions? Consent. Item 9.8, request approval of quarterly federal funds comparison report. Questions? Consent. Item 9.9, request approval of purchase of Security International for Silent Panic Alert Technology Grant. Questions? Consent. Item 9.10, request approval to renew property casualty windstorm insurance coverage for one additional year under the inter-local agreement with TASB. Questions? Consent. Item 9.11, request approval of option to extend proposals on RFP 1221, general merchandise and services district wide. Questions? Item 9.12, request approval of option to extend proposals on RFP 1221, professional consultant services district wide. Questions?
Question.
Okay, item 9.13, request approval of proposals for RFP property and contents coverage, windstorm insurance, and I believe that's up for discussion. So I'll question.
Can you get rid of my question on the last one? It was supposed to be for this one.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so on 9.13? Okay, so delete that. 9.12 is good to go. Any questions on 9.12? All right, 9.14, request approval of proposals on RFP 1221, meals and catering services district wide. Questions? Consent. Under administration, request approval of revisions to the 2223 compensation plan. Questions? Consent. 10.2, request approval of agreement between Samanito CISD and the University of Texas RGV Teacher Preparation Program. Questions? Consent. Item 10.3, request approval of, of agreement between Samanito CISD and the University of Texas RGV Principal Certification Preparation Program. Questions? Consent. Item 10.4, request. Item 10.4, request approval of agreement between San Bernardino C I S D and Walden University Licenseure Program Student Teaching. Questions? Consent. Item 10.5, request approval on San Bernardino High School fencing project. Item 10.6, request approval of board minutes. Questions? Consent. All right, at this time, I need a motion to approve consent agenda, consent agenda items 8.1, items 9.1 through 9.12, items 9.14 under administration, items 10.1 through 10.4 and 10.6. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Oscar Medrano, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ariel Cruz, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 7-0. Coming back to item 9.13, request approval of proposals for RFP 1221 property and contents coverage windstorm insurance. Mr. Serreion.
Yes, sir, I'm going to ask Mr. Cavazos to come forward. I know that they've given you an actual option, additional option for your windstorm. Oh, they're giving it to you, oh, sorry, I thought you had it.
Did you make it happen, sir?
I got it done from what I told you last week.
So, I know that there was a discussion item for the 35 million limit, which was added to this.
I have, I have Mr. Carlisle here, so he can answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, just as a briefer from last week, we did discuss the options, we did indicate some premium options for that $35 million option. I believe, I was looking back through my notes, we indicated it'd be about 1.2 million dollars for that option, and I think it came in at about 1.1 and some change, so, did a little bit of a discount from what we discussed last, last week, about a $90,000 discount. Well, I guess we got to define big next time, huh? Yeah.
Mr. Serreion, what would be your recommendation?
Sorry, I think I feel comfortable with the 35 million dollar option. I know that we had the 100 million dollar option last year. That would take us to 1.5 million, over 1.5 million. So, I think at this point, it's up to you all for discussion, if you feel that that would be good coverage for our district.
Does this cover new construction also?
It covers what we have on the schedule of values currently, so if anything's added, I know you guys are talking about a bunch of construction projects, once that stuff comes off, the contractors' insurance, onto the district's insurance, we'll endorse it on the policy, there will be additional charge for those buildings.
So it's not, while it's under the construction, then it belongs to them, basically, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you.
My recommendation is for the district to go into the 35 million dollar insurance policy for windstorm.
Board members, do we have any questions on that? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Ms. Serreion's recommendation to go with the 35 million dollar? Okay, we have Orlando Lopez, the second, second by Mario Silva, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that, thanks for the work. We come back to item 10.5, request approval of San Bernardino High School fencing project. We have a question by Mr. Corona, Mr. Corona?
I just wanted to find out, are we adding more fencing?
Yes, sir. Mr. Flores, go ahead and come up, and you get one minute to give Mr. Corona a brief overview of the wrapping up the high school.
Short and sweet, Mr. Flores.
Just give me what side you're doing, northwest, east side, what side? We had already gone over-
Everything on the interior is going to be covered, so all the exterior fencing that lead in Greyhound Lane, they'll be replaced, we'll have eight-foot fencing around there, we'll have fencing on the front, so we have an area up in the front that needs to be, the pedestrian walkway will be covered as well, we're going to redo that fencing in order to meet the fencing that needs to go eight feet all the way up to the first wing right there at the front entrance by the guard shack. Everything around, over on M, which is the medical side, there is an area that students use, and we do have some of the areas that allow for garbage pickup, that will be fenced off as well, that will go all the way up into the gym area.
So you're, you're talking about the northwest corner, then, that's going to be fenced?
Yes, everything around, to prevent, anything that we do have current openings, those will be closed up.
Okay, perfect.
And the fencing will be a mixture of ornamental fencing, which is the, the nice fancy fencing that you would see in front of VMA, and we'll also have some black vinyl fencing.
So that west side that's towards the frontage, that's going to be right before the canal or after that canal?
Correct. If we're looking at over by the canal embankment area, that fencing is still going to say that's not our fencing.
Oh, okay.
But the, the gates that lead into the campus will be replaced, we'll do this. That other fencing is supposed to belong to the, I believe, the irrigation district, if we're looking at the same gray fence that you're, you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
But I can send you the map as well.
Yeah, that's good, I mean, that's, that's all I was questioning, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Thank you.
With that said, do I have a motion to approve item 10.5 on the high school fencing project?
Moved.
Okay, we have a motion by, was it Rudy Corona?
Yes.
Second by Ariel Cruz. Okay, Frutoso, Frutoso, I was, yeah, Frutoso Gomez, sorry about that. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. All righty, moving on to action agenda items, action agenda item 11.1, discussion consideration and possible approval regarding purchases over 25,000. Mr. Serreion.
Yes, I recommend the board approve all purchases over 25,000 as presented.
Board members, do we have any questions?
I just have a question, the Amplify purchase order says $8,000.
Yes, Dr. McGee? Amplify?
It's just not over 25,000, so I was wondering-
But it's cum, it's cumulative.
Okay, that's my question.
Question answered, ma'am? Nope?
No.
Okay.
So it's cumulative?
Over 25,000, everything that we have purchased through Amplify.
Okay. No. More clarification, so this $7,932 is added on to what we've already purchased for Amplify, which puts it over the threshold of 25,000. Okay.
Got it. Question, all right. Any other questions, board members? Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation on these purchases over 25,000?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Oscar Medrano, a second by Mario Silva. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 7-0. Item 11.2, discussion consideration and possible approval regarding the memorandum of understanding between San Bernardino C I S D and the University of Texas at Rio Grande Valley Upward Bound Program for the 22-23 school year. Mr. Serreion.
Yes, I also recommend to the board that we approve the memorandum of understanding between San Bernardino C I S D and the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley Upward Bound Program.
Board members, any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Frutoso Gomez, a second by Mario Silva, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 7-0. Last item under action agenda, 11.3, discussion consideration and possible approval regarding the affiliation agreement between San Bernardino C I S D and the University of Texas at Rio Grande Valley Department of Organization and School Leadership Principal Practicum Program. Mr. Serreion.
Yes, I also recommend to the board that we approve the affiliation agreement between San Bernardino C I S D and the University of Texas Valley, Rio Grande Valley Department of Organization and School Leadership Principal Practicum Program.
Okay, that's a, that's a long agenda item, so. Ms. Serreion has made the recommendation that we accept the, approve the affiliation agreement between San Bernardino C I S D and the University of Texas at Rio Grande Valley Department of Organization and School Leadership Principal Practicum Program. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Okay, yeah, you guys, come on. Orlando Lopez and Oscar Medrano, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, 7-0. Motion carries. All right, at this time, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Open Meetings Act, the board may move into closed session for the following reasons, section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law, section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee, and section 551.082, certain school board deliberations. The time is 8:24, and we move into executive session. All right, the time is 8:54, and we reconvene into open session. Item 13.2, action on matters considered in closed session. So we move on to item 13.3, discussion and consideration of employment of student success director. Mr. Serreion.
Yes, my recommendation for director of student success is Larry Cantu.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept Ms. Serreion's recommendation?
So move. Second.
We have an, a motion by Mario Silva and a second by Oscar Medrano. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, no, 6 against, okay, 6-1. All righty, and do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, we have a motion by Mario Silva, second.
Second.
By Oscar Medrano. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 7-0. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a good night.
Good night, everybody.